Call to order, the February 27th, 2024, Bethel Planning and Zoning Meeting. I'm going to start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, let's start with our business meeting. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll introduce the commission. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Sorry.
Let's start down there, Ken.
Ken Barson, Commissioner.
Diane Ryan, Commissioner.
Well, Shirley, Chair.
City Grant Secretary.
Rule bringing, Commissioner.
Mike Kazlowski, Commissioner.
And David McCullough, my assistant, is online.
You know, we have Bob Legner with us on Zoom or Google Meet, it is now. Okay. So we'll start the business meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
No problems? Motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. And do we have an invoice for public noticing?
Yes.
For $412.70?
Yes.
Have a motion to accept?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. All right, new business, the Tindraper, 830G Affordable Housing, six units at 9 Putnam Park Road. I will be recusing myself from this application. So Katie, if you want to take over?
David?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. Okay, so you have an application that is before you for acceptance tonight, just for acceptance. Per the project description, not that I'm going to try to explain the application in depth, but the project description as the application states, quote, "Six units in two buildings under 8-30G with new driveway parking area, stormwater management, and onsite two disposal systems." Along with your application, you have a proposed affordability plan, a drainage report from the applicant's engineer, a site plan and its associated sheet sets, and a survey. The applicant is aware that they also have to submit architectural renderings. Those are in the works, but we have yet to receive either hard copies or digital versions of those. The commission should consider accepting this for a public hearing. There are some referrals that would have to be made. It is noted that, or it should be noted rather, that this applicant did not schedule a pre-application meeting with staff before submitting this application. So there should be some additional time given to the entities that need to conduct this review. With that in mind and with consideration to some of the other items that are on tonight's meeting agenda, the other application and some items that the planner wants to discuss with you. It's recommended that this public hearing be scheduled to open on April 9th, your regular meeting on April 9th.
Thank you, David. Okay, so could we have a motion to set this public hearing for April 9th, 2024?
Well, you have to accept the application first and then schedule the public hearing.
So we have accepted the application. And now we have to move on. Now we move on to making a date of April 9th. To accept the application?
Yes, a motion to accept and then...
Make a motion to accept the application.
And schedule the public hearing for...
Right, exactly. That is what I was thinking I was saying. Can we have that? Diane, would you like to do that?
Make a motion to accept the application and schedule a public hearing for April 9th.
Second.
And to send out to all the...
To the agencies in town to review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Okay?
Hold on one second. Just to clarify for anyone who is on the call that's not familiar with procedures with planning and zoning. If you had an interest in regards to, what is it, 9 Putnam Park Road? 9 Putnam Park Road, it was just on the agenda for scheduling. There may have been some confusion after reading an article in the News Times, thinking that the hearing is this evening. It is not this evening, and no public testimony will be taken in regards to this particular property. I hope that's helpful. You heard this. Hearing is scheduled for the 9th of April. If you wish to attend, it's in this room, which is Meeting Room D. You can park in the rear parking lot and use the door in the rear. You do not have to park in the front. And that's all I wanted to add for clarification for those that may have questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the next new business, we have Eric Chapman for a zoning text amendment for Tattoo Artist Studio.
Okay, regards to this, I had spoken to the chairman in regards to this proposed text amendment. I've had two meetings with the applicant over the last six weeks regarding this. As you can see by the application, there is request. Seven o'clock, Phil. There is a request to amend our zoning regulations to allow for a tattoo artist studio. If you look at the regulations presently, the way that it is prohibited use within the Town of Bethel. Also, it is also mentioned within what we have called the adult entertainment regulations. I'm sorry, I should have looked at the proper name for that. But it's also listed in there as an adult entertainment function. And so the request is to have it removed from that and have it put in place under personal care. Okay, the Google Drive contains all the information on the application. The one thing that I am going to do is to print out and put in the Google Drive the state statutes that they refer to as far as what is involved to become a tattoo artist. And I'll throw that in the Google Drive for you to look at and send it off to you. And so the public hearing has been scheduled. We need a motion to accept and schedule the public hearing, and that would be for March 12th.
I'll make a motion to accept the application and schedule a public hearing for March 12th.
Second.
And just note, for the record, I've already talked to our regional planning agency, West Hug, and they said that it may be of local interest, but nothing, no interest to any of the areas.
Is this going to the health department?
It goes to the State Health Department, and I was going to also have our health department look at it too. Because in reading the statutes, they have some overseeing of this activity.
No, we do have a second. I wanted to vote. All in favor? They opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we got a...
No, no, I understand. I apologize. I didn't realize you were under discussion and a motion. The next item on the agenda is work session. Another work session you've been waiting for data pertaining to TOD? In reviewing the regulations and where you are and where you've been and where you're going. And just...
Before we get into that, I have a point of information for me. Specific to the two artists and the regulations. Does the Planning and Zoning Commission have the authority to say, "We accept this in commercial zones, specifically these zones," or is this a blanket statement that will cover all of the commercial zones?
Anytime you receive an application or a regulation, you can amend it as you associate. If you want to amend it, or, you know, outside of doubt, not denial, you can amend the regulation to conform to how you feel individually or as a board. On where you want to see it, duh, you know, whatever the circumstances are pertaining to a regulation. If somebody wanted to build a 50,000 square foot industrial building anywhere, she wouldn't allow that. You know, to find an industrial building is 50,000 square feet? You would look at the zones and say, "Okay, that'll fit here, but it won't fit there." Similar system.
So we would have the authority to say...
Absolutely. You can amend it any way you want.
Verbage, but it applies only to these commercial zones.
And the definition itself, too.
And we can request town staff or whatever, if the health department needs to make a decision about if they need somebody to oversee it and that kind of...
I was going to refer to the health department, because when you look at the state statutes, there's a lot of references to what is required and the health department's...
Right, and then it needs to have building regulations and things made.
It's up to you to decide if you want to do building regulations.
There is something damn near about that sometimes, so.
Yeah.
Second question.
No, it's, we have a good evening, so.
When it comes to the 9 Putnam Road, do we request a traffic impact, or how does that work?
David, would you answer that question?
Yes, I can. That's a good question. That has come up for applications of that nature in the past. You can request a traffic report, but the commission should be focused on information that's pertinent to health, safety, and welfare, as those are the three venues or the, how do I say this? I'm not going to come up with the right word, but those are the three tenants, for lack of a better word, that the commission has really to focus on when they review these kinds of applications.
You didn't really answer the question, though.
I asked for a traffic study or not?
It's a stint road, right?
If the commission wants to ask for one, they can ask for one. Traffic studies related to...
We can't speak specifically about the project until the public meeting has happened.
Right.
If we're talking in generals, as an 830G project, I believe we can. Don't believe it's required. We can ask.
If you think it's important, right?
Okay. Typically, projects of residential units, it's in other towns, and my experience has been the unit count will trip a certain amount of how many trips are coming to and from the property, which would then require by law, a traffic study.
Yes.
I don't know if this meets that. We'd have to look at it.
We would have to see what the trip is, what that level is. Again, speaking in general terms for applications, not speaking about one particular application in particular.
Thank you. Always good. Thank you.
All right, now that we've derailed you. Back to your TOD presentation.
Okay.
Actually, you should have said, "Now that Sproul derailed."
All right, so basically you've been waiting for data pertaining to TOD. Just to remind everybody, without getting into a lot of detail, you know, the regulations have been in place since 2018. And the way I developed the figures that are before you is it's any residential development that has been CO'd and is occupied. Okay, similar to commercial development, it's all occupied. So you see your totals. The good news to me is that I think there is a little bit of a balance between the two, residential and commercial. I think we tend to forget about the commercial development that's been associated with the TOD residential development. One in two bedroom apartments, eight children in the school system. And speaking with Economic Development together, director, to know that we're at 99.2% occupancy in our commercial establishments throughout the downtown area is phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal. Traffic is a big thing. I can't, I want you to see the mobility study, the mobility and parking study. It is a very big eye-opener. And hopefully we'll have the parking data available for you at the next meeting, so we can spend a little time on that. And I also wanted to remind you that you have changed some of the TOD regs already. And even though some people may consider these major changes, I consider them tweaking, because after all, it was a totally new set of regulations. And as you, when you adopt new regulations, there's always an oops, we should have done this, or, and then you have to go back and you have to start fixing it. And that's what you've done so far. The... I did put some pictures on the Google Drive.
I looked at them all.
If you want to look at them, because some of you are familiar with TOD projects, some of you aren't. David, can I get to the drive from here?
That was very nice. The pictures were really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be able to, Beth, if you're logged in.
Me?
Well, yeah, it doesn't, it really shouldn't matter. If you're in the computer, you should be able to do that, no problem.
Yes, please. I'm not afraid to ask for help, ever. It's in the PNC drive.
I've got them. I'll pull them up on my screen if that's easier.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
Yep. Okay, can everybody see this?
Okay, that's a good one to start with. Okay, now, and the reason I put it there is it's important. Okay? The building has been standing there for a while. There's been work that's been done on the inside and the outside. It is at a standstill for the following reason. The building itself is on the property line of their own line and the real TOD. On this side of the building, which is along the railway, they're waiting, hopefully, for the Town of Bethel to complete getting a lease agreement with the state of Connecticut in order to continue with the building. The reason they're not continuing with the building has to deal with the fire rating system of the windows. Okay, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I should be looking at people that are in the construction world, and I apologize for not including some others. The windows themselves, depending on the fire rating, if it's a 45-minute fire rating, the windows that will, the expense on this side of the building is about $60,000 for the windows. If the fire rating, if they don't complete the lease agreement and get that extra six to 10 feet, the fire rating will have to be increased, and the costs of the windows are $300,000.
Holy, Mike.
So that is the holdup. It's not anything that you may hear by or innuendo, but that is the issue right now. Okay, so everybody has a clear understanding of what's going on. I know, and I am not involved with the lease agreement. Our first selection is involved in dealing with the state of Connecticut to get that lease agreement. And, but I just wanted to clear the air on that.
Thank you, that's good.
So that was an important piece of information. Where do you want to go next? This is, again, some of you were on this, some of you weren't. And isn't my chair across the street? I think it's gone today, but this is 80 South Street. It's not fully rented yet, but I believe it's 80% occupancy. And that's 10 units, of which two are affordable. Go ahead. Next one we all know is 155 Greenwood Avenue. Very controversial in nature when it was first brought into the commission and approved by the commission. It is fully occupied commercially and residentially. And Cafe Dua is great.
Did you get the notice from the bank?
I went there the other day.
Yes, I did. Yes, the bank is leaving. I got the notice as an account holder, yes. So 155, this one is one of my favorites. This barn is located between, behind 220 Greenwood Avenue, where the barber shop is. For some of you that are older than others, it used to be the hang-up, the Olympia Miller storefront with a snout nose in the front. But this is a two-unit, one-bedroom barn in the back. When they came in, it was not as good as it is now, but through architectural review by Elizabeth Petty and work with the client, it really is a very cute little two-unit structure. Go to the next one. This is the front of the structure, the other, the front building, right? Where I was talking about, there was the little snout out with the shop, very commercial-looking. And with, again, working with the owner, Mr. Spavario, I believe, and I believe the builder, the developer was Stephen DiMarco and the town, and your architectural regulations in the TOD, this was the end result. So you have the front building, and then you have the back building. Okay? This is the grand two, not the grand one. This is the grand two. This is the one that was built built under the TOD regulations. Again, this one has, I think, five affordable units. I don't have the exact, I should have put the exact unit count, so you could get those two. But remember, you do anything, if you have anything, five units or more, 20% is going to be affordable. And I think that's it. No, there was a few more. I just don't, I wanted to show them. Can you go back for a minute?
10 Worcester Street.
10 Worcester Street should be in there.
Yeah, I think it was.
And also 255 Greenwood Avenue. 253.
This is all that was available in the drive for this evening, Beth.
Oh, okay, you started at the beginning?
These seven, or six photos are what I have in the folder for tonight.
All right, I apologize. I thought I'd thrown them all up. Okay, I apologize for that. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
So any questions, anything that you want to bring up to discuss, Sproul?
All right, go again, sorry.
No.
No. I know you said this represents sealed and occupied.
That's correct.
Do, I'm sure you know what we have in the pipeline?
I would say what you have approved, if that's what you wish to know.
Right.
Approved, you have one building over here at 20 Worcester Street. I think there's, it's a home, it's a house structure. I think there's, I believe there's three units in there. You also have recently just approved South Street, which is behind the guest, the
Dr. Mike.
Dr. Mike. Dr. Mike's. Do you remember how many units are there?
I thought it was 14.
14 units, okay. There's one other one. Well, you have 77 South Street, the Buggy Building. The one that I showed you that had the window issues. That one is approved for, I believe originally it was approved for 16 units, and they whittled it down to 42. And that's what you have on the books.
Is that Metro North the town's negotiating with?
No, they're negotiating with the Department of Transportation State. But that's what you have going on now.
Okay.
That's what's in there.
And the other construction that we have around town?
The other construction that you have around town is, you have an 830G application at 28 South Street for five units. That was approved. You have 6 Cindy Lane, which is six units, an affordable housing application that was approved. You have 64 Worcester Street, which was an affordable housing application with, I may be off on my unit count, seven units there, which was approved. And you have at the corner of Whittlesey Drive and Plum Trees Road, an 830G application for single families, which was approved, and I think that's
10.
10.
11.
11. And that's off the top of my head of what else we have going on at the moment. You have, I will tell you that the applications that I've been reviewing in the pre-app phase
National Road, too.
Are, there's nothing on the books with that.
Oh, no, yeah.
In the pre-application phase, you have several commercial industrial developments that will be coming in shortly.
If everything that is approved right now was to get a CO tomorrow?
Yes.
Would we meet our threshold to ask for a moratorium? We're close, aren't we?
I would say that you're very close. I don't think it's something that I can definitely share at this time. As far as your final counts, but obviously with those three developments, that would bring you very, very close.
And Route 6.
Route 6.
No, we don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was dealing strictly with TOD.
I thought we were talking about 4, so.
Oh, no, well. Yes, there is.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, let's talk, ideas? Anybody have any ideas, any changes, anything you want to see?
Again, for my own personal education. When you said moratorium, what do you mean?
Like a pause?
Okay, we can talk about 830G a little bit if that's helpful, absolutely.
It's tied with the moratorium.
Because 830G is, there is a component of it in the TOD zone. 830G, the, when we say moratorium, there's a component in that statute that allows you, if you reach 2% of your 10%, first year required to have 10% affordable units within your town. If you reach 2% by building the 2%, then you're entitled to a four-year moratorium. So that means that if anybody comes in with an 830G, you do not have to accept the application. That's how it works.
This is kind of dealing with the IRS, but so we're supposed to have 10%. But if we reach 2%, we can say, well, we're going to stop for four years.
Correct. And by the changes that you've done as a group in your regulations over the years, almost everything that you build now, outside of a straight, single-family home subdivision, has a requirement for affordable housing. So once you are going to meet that moratorium, and we will, you always have the option of carrying it over. Because if you keep adding, if you keep adding to that list, you're getting, you're going to get to that point where you're going to be asking for a moratorium every four years. I can guarantee it. And as far as, you know, a moratorium, and please understand, I have seen situations when a town is getting ready to apply for a moratorium, and then all of a sudden they get slammed and then all of a sudden they get slammed with two or three new eight thirty G applications, because until you have that moratorium, you still have to accept applications. That's why I was saying, I'm not, it's not going to be tomorrow, okay? General public, it's not going to be tomorrow.
Have we heard from the court yet about Whitney?
We submitted the return of record this past week. And there are some components of the record that we are reviewing and working on to finalize us, starting for the, finalize the town to be in a position of writing briefs. When they write a brief, usually you have forty-five days. Tom will go first. Tom will write a brief. He's got forty-five days to write that brief and submit it. Then the applicant has forty-five days to answer, and so it begins. That's how it works.
What about crematorium?
I have nothing. Crematorium was another case you lost in the Supreme Court several years ago. And, and that, there was a crematorium that was proposed over the industrial park. And the commission denied it. And we went through the court system, and the court said, the court agreed with the applicant and they haven't approved that plan for crematorium.
Well, we won the first two courts.
Yes, we did. We lost in the Connecticut Supreme Court. That was tough one. Very interesting.
I'm surprised they haven't gone forward.
All right, we're going to move on to public info. There's no one here. Anybody on Google?
There, there was a gentleman who, who intermittently raised and unraised his hand, but I do not see it raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I see Penny Kessler on there raising her hand.
Hi Penny. Penny, you are muted.
Well, yes, I am. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having this meeting. This is really interesting. I have some questions. In fact, I have several questions. And this is not specific to any, to any project. The first question, the, the subject of traffic studies came up. Who pays for traffic studies?
As far as traffic studies with applications, it is charged back to the applicant for a traffic study. We do not pay for them. We use the regulation allowing us to seek outside consultants.
All right, terrific. Thank you. So there was, something was mentioned about, I think I saw, oh, right. Beth, I think you mentioned something about parking data that would be available for the next meeting. Will that, will that be available to the public?
It should be, yes. If I can get, if I get the data, I can throw it up in the drive. It is not, it is, it is more for the commission's review. It probably will be in a draft format and not finalized. But it'll be an indicator. I truly believe it'll be helpful to the commission.
Great, thank you. And I think it would be helpful also for the public because parking has been a very hot topic. I want to, I want to continue on the topic of parking. I know, Beth, you, you and I spoke about this a while ago, but is there any thought of changing the regulations regarding parking for multiple, multiple, multiple family houses and multi-use projects? I'm, I'm just going to put out my thoughts. I think there's not enough. And I wonder if that's something that's under consideration.
In the traffic and mobility study, it really centered on the downtown Greenwood Avenue area. So it was really dealing with traffic and the parking surrounding our commercial businesses. It did not reach out into residential areas.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm talking about just in general, changing the parking regulations. And I'll give you an example. So if a developer is required by, by our regulations to have X number of parking spaces per unit, one, one and a half, I never understood the one and a half. That makes no sense to me, but what are you going to do? What we're finding is that, I, I think, and what the town people are telling us, is that when we have a lot of these multifamily dwellings, there is not enough parking within the, the development itself. So is there any thought of changing the regulations regarding parking to require developers to add more parking?
I would say at this point, no. I mean, with the Traffic and Mobility Committee, the answer is no. Because our focus has been on, like I said, the commercial area, aspects of the downtown area. I think it's difficult to answer that question, because when you talk about multifamily developments, and I've even seen it within single-family developments, that parking is an issue. And the question then becomes, is parking an issue because you're dealing with a multi-generational family situation? And things of that nature. It's, it's, it's extremely difficult in those type of areas, but it is something that the commission, I think, will probably review when they look at, at least start with the Parking and Mobility Study.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. And what is the occupancy of Grant Two? What, what's the percentage? Is it fully loaded?
I, I don't know what the occupancy now is, but I would tell you that it's CO'd. So if there's twenty-five apartments in that building, all twenty-five of them can be occupied. I don't know what the rental turnover is.
No, that's, that's fine. I was just wondering. That's it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Kessler, we just need your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Penny Kessler, twenty-two Spring Hill Lane.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there, there was another gentleman who had his hand raised and I, he has re-raised it, Phil Langen.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for, thank you for calling on me. Yeah, Phil Langen, seven Putnam Park Road.
Excellent.
I did have a couple of general questions regarding the, the process for applying for the moratorium on eight thirty G. Just overall in general, is, is there a pretty firm understanding of the of what needs to be done and how to initiate that, that application to, to start the moratorium process for that?
Yes, I would, can I answer? Yes, there is. A part of my duties, I work, I am the chairman of the Bethel Housing Authority. I deal with the Department of Housing in the state of Connecticut, which will be accepting this application on a, on a very weekly basis, I would say pertaining to things of this nature. You know, we, I run, we run Reynolds Ridge, we run Phidias Park. We also make sure that the administration of our affordable housing is done correctly by property owners through our NP rental property manager. So we have a good handle and other towns have talked to us in regards to this. If your question, next question may be something like, why we haven't received a moratorium? I would tell you that moratoriums are based on the population of the town, but it's based on the U S Census. So if you recall, in twenty twenty, the census numbers for the town of Bethel went up close to ten percent. So therefore now you have to recalculate what's ten percent of the total amount of residential homes, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it, it's frustrating because we are very, very close to that number. And I would tell you that there is no other town, what I call town, within our area that has reached that two percent. You will find, if you go to the state of Connecticut website, I'm probably giving you too much information, Phil. I'm sorry. Go to the state of Connecticut, Department of Housing website. There's, and if you want, you can talk to my office in the morning. We'll email you the appeals list. When you look at the appeals list, the only one that is meeting is ten percent per se are your cities.
I, I did have another question about the initiation of starting a traffic study too. I think that there is, there was, somebody did answer my question a little bit about that, but I just wanted to confirm that the, the process for that is something that is easily initiated if, if needed and that the committee knows how to set that and, set that forward if, if, for any, any situation.
If there is any reassurance I can give you, when they do the referrals, they refer to, they refer something of that nature for any application before them to the police commission of the town of Bethel. The police commission also has a Lieutenant Durkett, who is their man on the spot. And you will, you will find that sometimes the police commission may recommend that a traffic study be done. And that's when all these other things that we discussed previously would come into play. We do get, we do get something, you know, or at least a starting point.
The, the police department decides whether there needs to be a traffic study?
They don't decide. They can recommend it to us.
They can recommend it. Okay. All right.
They give a report usually. And check with the department. They'll tell you when their meetings are.
Excellent. I, I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Penny Kessler has re-raised her hand.
Hi, twenty-two Spring Hill Lane, still here, still there. Beth, can you just confirm? I, I, I lost the number here. In the twenty-twenty census, what percentage did our numbers go up?
Almost ten percent.
Almost ten percent. Okay. Residential, sure. Okay. Thank, thank you.
Is there any other public comments? All right, commission comments, anyone?
You're doing a good job, Paul.
State doing a study versus Bethel. If, if there's a traffic study or if you want a traffic study.
If that's a state road versus.
I will tell you that, as an example, so the question is state versus town. As an example, I'm with six, the developments that happen up there, the farms and upstream properties. The applicants did traffic studies. And the reason was that, for that was to determine, and they paid for it, not us. But they, they do it to determine any kind of improvements that needed to be done at the light intersections. And also to see if the generations have changed the level of service for the road. And that could be a factor too. And those traffic studies are submitted to the state.
Turning lanes or anything.
Yeah. And then they, and then what they do is for the driveway openings and things of that nature, they have to apply, they have to send the site plan and everything to the state of Connecticut. And they get a certificate of David? The, the DOT certificate that we have to receive prior to them doing anything. It's from the, I'm sorry. Thank you. O S T A. Thank you. And it's filed in land records. So there's a process. I just wanted to give you what this is.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Langen has re-raised his hand.
Is there any other commission comments? Before I open it back to Mr. Langen? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I do have a question about that. Oh, the pass the, right, for the traffic study from the state and the, and the application and approval for that from them. Has, has the town received anything about any of the current applications that were open for consideration tonight regarding, regarding that?
Uh, no, the, nothing happened with any of the applications tonight. They were all just accepted and scheduled.
Is, is there more details on the type of information that, that particular of, uh, study and certification references?
If you want to discuss general, you know, general aspects of what triggers a traffic report and things of that nature and what the process is for that, Phil, I would suggest you call my office tomorrow and I can go over with you what the process is.
Sure. May I have your phone number, please?
Sure, it's two zero three, seven nine four, eight five seven eight.
Thank you.
Questions are general in nature, I can answer them.
Thank you. Chairman, Mr. Penny Kessler has, has re-raised her hands.
David, David, you can just call me Penny. It's okay. We're on a, we're on a first-name basis, I promise. So a quick question about the closing of the Wells Fargo building. Is there any word on whether or not closing that business will affect the parking that's along the, along Volpentesta Drive?
I haven't had any communications with the property owner or Wells Fargo about anything that is happening to the building. I'm, I'm an account holder, whatever. May fifteenth is our closing date.
All right. If there's no other comments?
I just have one. Is Putnam Park Road a state road? That, that's fifty, thank you. I was doubting that. And, and I said, it makes sense.
We were just recently in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they have, where people share the parking. You can, you've got like a, you know, you can use your cell phone and, you know, use parking from someone else. I mean, it's like a shared thing. It's, it's, it's a whole interesting thing that they have where different businesses, when they're not in operation, let their parking area be used. I'm just wondering if that's something that we caught into. Because I mean, I think that's, I mean, I don't know.
We've had this, well, we've had discussions about that. With, well, for example, I, we did have a discussion with the first selectmen about the need for something like that, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, that shared parking. And you do something like that, there has to be some kind of a contribution from the town, either through maintenance or plowing or something. So that has been discussed, but I, it hasn't gone any further than.
It would be interesting.
It would, it is.
Somewhere else. See if it's something we can do here.
Considered a state or federal grant to, to actually build a parking garage out here?
A parking garage? No.
It's going to happen one day.
Are you asking me for my opinion? It's, no, there's just, I would say in regards to the town hall property that, and again, we've discussed this in the mobility study to a degree. There has been some discussion and you will see a driveway along the side of the property here, leading into the parking area in the back, a proposal for a one-way driveway in. Because people get confused when they come to the municipal center and they don't understand how to get to the back. And they don't understand how to get to the back to go to parking. That's one thing that will be a minor improvement. The second thing is also on my town hall bucket list, which is, uh, several years ago, we built a, um, handicap ramp over by the tax collector's office and by the town clerk's office. At the same time that we built that ramp, we also designed a parking area on that side of the building where sixteen spaces could be put in there. And I would request that the majority of them be handicapped.
Yes.
That's on my goal of things that I want to see done before I leave, um, that we get to that point. We did develop a concept plan, and the handicap ramp was done, but it was never implemented. I am, I, I'm, I'm sure all of you have seen this, when I know we all vote, I know you all probably vote in the, you know, work in the polls, or you all come up and you, sometimes you pay your taxes, you get your dog licenses or whatever. I am extremely tired of seeing our special needs, or our elderly, or me with a twisted knee, walking up those long sidewalks to get into this building. And I think accessibility is, is on the top, one of the top items on my list.
Until you're there. When I go to buildings now, because of what's happened to me, I look at where the handicap spaces are and I go, are you, we approve that? You know, until, as I said, until you're there, i- it's, it's hard, but you, you're right. What you have is something I am wanting to see happen.
Okay, that's, I, I'm talking to you.
No, no. It's a conversation that should have been had a long time ago.
Okay, we done?
Phil Langen has re-raised his hand, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Phil.
Um, I would like to make an observation about the parking spaces in town hall too. I, uh, I have a, a, uh, young child that I bring to the Parks and Rec, uh, daily, and, uh, park in that general area. And I did make an observation about the, uh, utilization of the handicap parking spots as opposed to, uh, on the, uh, right in that same area. There's also a lot of, uh, reserved parking spots that seem to be of, of, oh, uh, for lack of a better word, a permanent parking lot for a lot of town vehicles too. So I agree, I would agree that there is, there is a lot of, um, uh, space that could be utilized for, for a lot of good in that, in that whole general area. So just a, just an observation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, anyone? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion for adjourned.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Voting passive. Night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you, everybody.